Started, I will remind folks as I usually do, if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. And how did I lose my agenda?
Right here.
Well, yeah, but Katie knows I don't like doing. So, I'll call the meeting to order for, this is why I like my agenda, Tuesday, May 9th, there we go. It is about 6:35 PM. Call roll, please.
5:34, and Commissioner Ie, here. Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Mingleberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. So, anybody have future agenda items? Okay. Moving on, we will go Community Health Improvement Plan Presentation by the Clackamas County Public Health Division, Mr. Conkle.
And so, we have two representatives from Clackamas County, Director of Public Health, and provide us an update on the Community Health Improvement Plan that they've completed.
Good. And I'm sorry, I forgot to fill out the card for Jamie. Sorry, Jamie. I can introduce myself. My name is Jamie Zentner. I'm Program Planner at Clackamas County Public Health, and I want to thank you on behalf of our Public Health Division to allow us time this evening to share the results, the highlights, of our community health assessment. I know your time is very limited, so we are going to be concise.
Oh, yes. Hello. Now it's my turn.
And I want to thank you for queuing this up for us. Yay!
We're fancy.
We see it.
This sounds pretty high-tech.
This is one of 80 presentations we are making around Clackamas County. We've been meeting with community-based organizations and local decision-makers like yourselves. The Community Health Assessment, Dawn is going to get into, but I will just say that this is a culmination of a lot of data that started at the regional level and has been pared down to the local level. This evening, I'm briefly going to explain the role of public health in Clackamas County, and introduce a concept called Health Equity Zones, and get some feedback from you on that proposed concept. As I said, Dawn's going to share some themes, some highlights from a community health assessment, and then we're going to ask you to participate in an activity so you can help us prioritize the health needs of your community. So when we say "public health," what comes to mind for you? What do you think about? Immunizations?
Control of infectious diseases.
Control of infectious diseases.
Probably vector control for mosquitoes and stuff.
Homelessness.
Ooh. Mm-hmm. I think we got a new one on there. She's writing that one down.
Well, thank you for those. Yes, we are involved in all of that to some extent, less so in the direct services. Our program areas fall into four buckets of work. The first one is access to care. Public health used to be very involved in providing immunizations. We are less involved now in the direct services, although we still provide services like WIC and breastfeeding support services. Access to care includes programs like immunizations, but our immunization program now focuses on making sure clinics in the communities have the vaccinations they need, making sure that the students have their vaccinations all up to date in schools. The infectious disease, as you mentioned, the monitoring, we receive reports on waterborne and foodborne illnesses. We follow up on those disease outbreaks. It includes diseases like tuberculosis and hepatitis, sexually transmitted infections. All of those are monitored and followed up with our infectious disease team. Environmental health includes our restaurant inspectors. I recently learned that our restaurant inspectors also inspect the food carts, and school cafeterias, and spas, and hotels, and pools. All of those are inspected and licensed for the health of, to ensure that we don't get sick when we use those public services. And finally, the fourth area of work is healthy, safe, and clean places. And this is more in the making sure where we live, work, and play is healthy, clean, and safe, such as the air, water, that we have access to healthy foods, that we have clean air in the form of tobacco-free policies. So those are the four areas that we're working in predominantly. Our Public Health Division in 2014 was accredited, and we were one of the first 50 public health departments in the country to be accredited, very much like a hospital goes through national accreditation. It's a voluntary initiative, but what that holds us to very high standards, in that we have to, we're required to do community health assessments, and then from those assessment results, we develop a community health improvement plan. So you see that arrow that you are here, we are at the community health assessment stage. And so, we have been, we started these roadshow presentations in January, and this month, at the end of this month, we're finishing these up. The results, the feedback that we gather from the community organizations and leaders like you are being put into a community health improvement plan, which will be adopted by the community, the Board of County Commissioners. Our hope and ideal is that the community health improvement plan is owned by the community, and that everybody feels like they have a role in improving the health of Clackamas County. We have a Center for Public Health Advancement, where they will lead our policy agenda, our research agenda, legislative agenda. They are essentially the research hub, the data hub, and will be, will be driving our community health improvement plan forward. And now, I will turn it over to Dawn.
Good. Great. Well, thank you again very much for allowing us to come and speak to you. So I'm Dawn Emmerich, I'm the Director of Public Health for Clackamas County. I can't believe that it's almost been a year. So I started in this position in June of last year, moved all the way from Jacksonville, Florida, for this opportunity, and so I'm really happy to see the sun, let me say. Really happy to see the sun.
Get used to it.
Oh, man. You know, beautiful summers, but boy, couldn't get here fast enough. So, I also just wanted to kind of say, this has just been really a wonderful process that we are embarking on. We have to do this community needs assessment every three years. So when we look at our accreditation requirements, we have this accreditation board that comes in and makes sure that we're doing all the things so that we can stay accredited, and the community needs assessment is one of them. So, what we're doing differently, though, is three years ago, when we did this needs assessment, we really kind of stayed internal. We kind of stayed in our building and looked at the data and did some analysis that way. As Jamie mentioned, this is one of 80 roadshows, this is what we're kind of calling them. So we are going all throughout the county, and really making sure that we're getting feedback and the voice of the community to have input on this data, that it's not just us, that we're actually, and that's why we have that participation poster over on the board, because we really want you to help us prioritize, instead of us sitting in our, behind our desk and computer and doing it on behalf of the county. So, this is really wonderful, and I just appreciate you allowing us to have some time to do that. So, what we have with the community health assessment, one of the things that we noticed in Clackamas County, first of all, it's big, it's a big county. It's geographically diverse, and it's demographically diverse. And so, oftentimes, as public health practitioners, unfortunately, we tend to throw brochures out of a helicopter and think that that works. And so, we're not being very intentional in terms of who we're targeting, who we're addressing, who we're talking with. Clackamas County has a lot of different economic statuses. So in the public health world, when you have data, a lot of times where there is wealth, it also equates to very high health outcomes. So it's called "health equals wealth." And so, in Clackamas County, we're the second healthiest, second healthiest county in the state. Okay? Great thing, right? Great thing. But what we also know is that we also have one of the wealthiest counties in the state. And the research shows that where there is wealth, there is health. And so, if you were to take some of the wealth out of the county, we have a very different county. And so, we have to be very mindful of that to ensure that we are providing equitable services, and that we are also, public health is responsible for every citizen in the county. We're not just low-income, we're not just a particular culture or a race, we are responsible for every citizen, and so we want to ensure that we are meeting the needs of every citizen. So what we've done is that we've looked at the county, and we said, okay, let's look at the data in a very different way. The needs of Oregon Trail are very different than Lake Oswego. So why should we be addressing public health needs in the very same way as we would in Lake Oswego? It's very different. Estacada is very different than Canby. Right? And we also know that we have this huge rural-urban divide in our county. What the rural residents need are very different than what the urban residents need, and so we have to look at our needs assessment in the same way. So we came up with these health equity zones, and all of the data that we have, that comes available to us, breaking it down into telling the story around these 10 health equity zones, instead of making a blanket statement around the county. Does that make sense? So this is a new thing that we have brought out this year, and this is one of the things that we'd like for you to give us feedback on in terms of what you think about it. So let me just give you, so we'll go through the assessment. There is a couple, there's some buckets that we looked at. Culture of health. So when we looked at the data and looked at what is the status of health in Clackamas County, the culture of health is all about the things around us, the built environment. So how, you know, our schools, our economic development, our roads, our transportation, our housing, crime, all of that creates a culture of health, and those influence, and actually, the studies show that this culture of health actually influences your health more so than having a doctor. So we have this huge discussion around our country, around health insurance and health care. But what the research shows is that those who do not have stable housing have a more likelihood of having poor health outcomes than having insurance, and so we have to be very mindful of that. So this is what culture of health looks like. So just to give you an example, several differences among the health equity zones as it relates to high school graduation rates, the median household income. We also know that homelessness and housing stability was an additional health concern identified through the assessment, looking at individuals seeking housing resources, and the proportion of youth experiencing homelessness. If you are homeless, can you really manage your diabetes? If you're poor, can you really manage your diabetes? Can you afford your test strips? Can you get to your doctor's appointment? Do you have transportation to get there? Again, the culture of health. Primary care shortage, ratio of primary care providers to the residents, 1 to 1159. And that is a little high compared to the others, meaning that it's, well, low, meaning that it's, you have a shortage, somewhat of a shortage of primary care in your, so again, you could have insurance, but if you do not have the primary care physicians to go to, then how do you access your care? Right? So these are all the things that we look at. So let's just break this down a little bit. So here is graduation rates per health equity zone. The green line is the national goal, and you can see throughout the county, it's really not appropriate to say that Clackamas County has a particular graduation rate. What you really should look at are breaking it down into the equity zones. And then what you can do is if you look at Oregon Trail, and you can see that the graduation rates for that health equity zone is below the national goal, then let's understand why. Now let's start asking, what are the root causes? We also then would look at that Oregon Trail and say, those children then could be predisposed or predicted to have poor health outcomes as adults as a result of this. So our approach in Oregon Trail would be very different than Westland and Wilsonville. Okay? And we hope that yours would be as well, if you look at the data and try to use this to make decisions. Graduation rates by economic status by health equity zone. So now what you're looking at is free or reduced lunch by health equity zone. And again, economically disadvantaged is the blue, and not economically disadvantaged is the green. So this is the graduation rates broken down a little bit more, so that you can understand what's happening behind that curtain, or sort of peeking behind the curtain a little bit. Once more, if you're reporting the data from a county perspective, you're missing this story. This is what you're missing. So let's drill down a little bit more. Estimates of children ages 5 to 17, living in poverty by health equity zone. This particular one is really looking at a five-year span. So of course, I think, I wonder where all of your eyes are going. So if you look at Oregon City, you can see really what the data is showing in Oregon City. How does that necessarily compare to some of the other health equity zones that are in the county? What's really interesting is that you could look at 2011, right? I mean, that's where there's a significant increase in poverty, and then you see the numbers after that, some adjustment after that. But certainly, 2011 hit all of Clackamas County pretty hard. All right. So those are your culture of health. Those are things that are in our environment. Now we have health behaviors. These are the individual choices that we make that have an outcome to our health. These are things that we can influence. All right? These are things that we can influence. So let's go through this a little bit. Alcohol use in the past 30 days, youth 8th and 11th graders. So the 11th graders, you see, are 30 percent of 11th graders within the last 30 days have experimented with alcohol, and 8th graders are at 12.3. Percentage of attempted suicide in the past year, 8th graders, 7.6 percent, 11th graders, 4.6 percent. And the percentage, now be careful with this particular stat, it gets a little funky. Percentage not meeting physical activity guidelines, 71 percent of 8th graders are not meeting the physical activity standards, and 76 percent of 11th graders are not meeting physical activity standards. That's wow. Right? That's a wow. And then the national goal is 68, which is even actually kind of weird, because you would, remember, the low number is better. The low number is better here, and that's still at 68, the national one, is still at 68. So percentage not, so this is the adults, that was children, this is adults. Percentage not meeting physical activity guidelines is 76 percent. So not much changing. So those children who are inactive are becoming inactive adults. Right? So that's what we're kind of seeing here. And then I'm going to make that correlation, why that's a problem. Percentage who report binge drinking, women, 12.8, and men, 18.8. Opioid. So again, health behaviors, individual health behaviors. These are things, again, that we can influence. Opioid prescription recipients per 1,000, in 2015, you see there was a huge spike. Now I can tell you that out of the three counties in the tri-county area, so us, Multnomah, and Washington, Clackamas has the highest rate of prescription per capita across the region. We have more prescriptions issued than we have residents in our county. So we have some, we have some work here. Illnesses and chronic conditions. Okay? So you have the environment that influences your health, your individual decisions, your behaviors that influence your health, and these are some of the results of that. So illnesses and diseases. Chronic conditions? So I want you to think about those, that data that I just mentioned. So, obesity among children 6 to 11, look at Clackamas County, and then look at the national Approximately 2 in 10 have asthma diagnosis, which is one of the most expensive health issues, because these children go straight into the emergency room, whether you're insured or not insured. That is a very expensive treatment, and one that if you don't control it, you have kids that are just coming back and forth, just like this. So very, it's not one of those things that the hospitals really want to continue to see in their emergency room. So we have an opportunity there. High blood pressure diagnosis, female and male, and then the Clackamas average. Depression diagnosis, female, 33.8, and male, 16.5, with the Clackamas average. So this is always one that gets eyebrows raised. We have a sexually transmitted infection problem in our county. So what I would say is that it's not isolated, that this is happening across the entire country, but this is really what's happening here in Clackamas. So you can look at chlamydia, gonorrhea, and syphilis. I can tell you that the gonorrhea and the syphilis are almost at an epidemic proportion. We are really having some very big internal conversations about how we need to address this within the county. We do have a significant outbreak, it's not in, it's not in this health equity zone, but we do have a syphilis outbreak in another area of the county that we are looking at working with folks in the community to try to resolve that. So this is, this is what we do. So the chlamydia is 243 to 291, 23 cases to 52 cases, and then 2 to 11. Those numbers may not sound big to you, but from an epidemiology perspective, and from us nerds, when we look at that, that's a significant jump, especially the syphilis rates. You know, syphilis used to be that you really didn't see a lot of that any longer, and so it's starting to come back. What we are monitoring, and we have not had any in Clackamas yet, but if we don't get a hold of this, we're going to start seeing babies born with syphilis. And so, we are seeing that in some of the other counties. It hasn't hit in Clackamas, but we want to try to prevent that, and so that's part of why we're really keeping our eye on this. And so that just gives you a different map of looking at the STIs. STIs are another word for STDs. I think some folks know sexually transmitted diseases, it's the same thing. So STIs is the same thing as STDs. So you can see a little bit of the trends there. All right. Top 10 leading causes of death. So what are we dying from in Clackamas County? The number one is cardiovascular disease. Cancer, lower respiratory diseases, Alzheimer's disease, non-transport accidents, diabetes, intentional self-harm, so suicide, drug-induced deaths, chronic liver disease, and alcohol-induced deaths. These are in order. So these are your top 10. The thing I want you to keep in mind, or especially this top three, the top three are 100 percent preventable. 100 percent preventable. The leading contributors to those top three is physical activity and tobacco. So, go back to the original data sets that I was showing you, and let's remember what the youth data said. We also said that the youth were obese, and they were not getting their physical activity, and they had asthma. Right? So we know that already. Look at the top three. We will never move this needle if we don't address our children. Those children that we just gave you data on are going to continue to be the top three in the next 25 years. So it's really imperative that we go upstream and really hit those numbers. 6 is also a form of, for food, and also physical activity, and then drug-induced deaths, chronic liver disease, and alcohol. 8, 9, and 10 are substance abuse-related. Completely preventable. So, now it's time. Any questions on that? I tried to go through it fast, but yet give you enough detail that you knew what you were looking at. So what we want to do now, and let me also just say, Jamie mentioned it a little bit, we had this regional report that we did with Clark County, Multnomah, Washington, and then us. So that was regional. We took that information, drilled down to Clackamas. That assessment is about this thick. There was no way that you all were going to allow us to come in here and give you that much data. So what we've done is said, okay, well, let's synthesize it even more, and let's put them up on the board. This is not everything, but this is enough that we felt like we're bubbling from the report a little bit, that we wanted to get your impression on. What we're going to ask you to do, Jamie has given you three dots. You are not allowed to negotiate with anyone about getting four or five more dots, and you're not allowed to sell them to anyone, and you can only, you have to use them in three different places. So you can't take your three dots and stack them into one issue. What we want you to do, and you can come up, all at once, because you're a small group, you can come up, and I want you to put your dots on any of those white, do you want to use the white blocks?
Yeah, so I'll just read them out, so you can start to get an idea, because obviously you can't read it from where you are. But the areas are increased high school graduation rates, increased access to housing, increased healthcare access, decrease the number of people who attempt suicide, decrease the number of youth who report alcohol use, increase the number of people who meet physical activity guidelines, decrease obesity, decrease sexually transmitted infections, decrease high blood pressure and/or diabetes diagnoses, and decrease cardiovascular deaths. So if you take your dots and you can put them right here on these white blocks, that's fine.
And that's, this is going to help us prioritize. So remember that what these health equity zones were, there is an Oregon City Health Equity Zone, so all of your information is going to come back, and we're going to look at identifying the needs of the Oregon Health Equity Zone. So please come on up and put your three dots in where you think you'd like for us to focus.
Does green, yellow, blue matter?
Nope. Sure doesn't.
Hey, while we're dotting, can you talk about why you think the opioids are so much higher in our county?
I wish I had an answer for you. So right now, I'll speak, should I speak now? Okay. So the question was, why, why is the opioid issue more prevalent here in Clackamas? So we're still trying to figure that out. What we do know is that there is not any type of regulation on the amount of prescriptions that can be issued, and there's no one monitoring that. So there's, there is a system where you can monitor, monitor physicians who are giving the prescriptions out, and then how many they're doing it, but it's an opt-in. It's all voluntary. So that's one. We also know that dentists are prescribing quite a bit. Here's, here's the thing that I want you to be very, these are, this opioid issue is one that is impacting everyone. It does not have a socioeconomic face to it. And what we're finding, however, is that there is a strong conversion rate of those who are addicted to opioids, who then get off because the prescription is running out, and they're turning to heroin. And so now you have a heroin addict who might have been, you know, CEO of a company, that's hypothetical, I know I'm being recorded, so I'm going to make that hypothetical, but this is what we're seeing. Now we're seeing, you know, that person who is now strung out on the corner in heroin. So it's, yeah, it's a real problem. So we are just in the process of really doing a good assessment on the opioid issue to get a better understanding. So we definitely are looking, we have a relationship with Clackamas County Sheriff with Naloxone, so we are helping to save people who are overdosing with opioids, but we need to get upstream, and that upstream is the prescriptions. We've got to do some significant outreach to the providers, encourage them to get into this database so that we can monitor, and change policy. A long work, a long way to go.
I have the same sense of that. I think that starts with the willingness of the professional medical community to make those prescriptions as an immediate go-to solution, and hopefully, you know, the AMA could get engaged, American Medical Association and others, but that is going to be a long uphill battle.
It is. It is. It's definitely going to cause- It's, it's definitely going to cause what we call a triangulation, where it's not just about education. This is not about self, you know, self-responsibility. We've got to have all, all hands on deck and, and get this surrounded, absolutely. All right, Jamie, you good?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out what, oh. Just wanted to point out. Okay. The most common, what you all agree is the most common is increased access to healthcare, access to housing, and then other top were increasing the number of people who meet physical activity guidelines and decreasing cardiovascular deaths. So now my question to you all is thinking about your work here in the city of Oregon City, folks in the audience too. How do your priorities, city of Oregon City priorities align with, well, how do these priorities align with the work that you do and the people you represent?
Anybody want to go?
Um, just a couple of comments. The, as far as the city, I'm sure you're aware that cities, the cities generally don't focus on, on health matters, it's more of a county matter. You know, we make sure streets are safe and, you know, that sort of thing.
That's, yeah.
And, and then we, we rely on the county to provide those services. So, but that doesn't excuse us from being aware of what's happening, you know, like especially in the police department and just what, the kind of data and, and experiences that they have that can be brought out and brought to our attention and addressed in some, in some way, at least being aware of it and sending it on to you perhaps. But the other comment I had was the housing end of it. So we could, we can create codes that are amenable to good housing and affordable housing for low income, since housing first is a federal mandate, and, and once someone is housed, they generally have access, more access
Correct.
To the other services. So I guess that's all.
That was great. Great feedback. Yeah.
So I would probably, along with Commissioner Ry, too, that's what I was thinking about, was the housing issue, because I think, you know, without stable housing, it seems to drive a lot of stress for the children, for the parents, the whole family, and which leads to a lot of these things, like in high school and things like that. So I kind of put that as almost number one there, because that's, because I think the housing part of it starts a lot of these other issues here and stuff, so.
Yeah, very good.
But also, and also education, I know you said, education only goes so far, but we can't give up on that, you know, that, and the further down we can go into the schools, any kind of, whatever is tangible for them at that time in their lives, you know, that, you know, it's, that's, I think education is another key part of that, too, so.
Well, I appreciate the, I'd like to clarify, so thank you for that. And so when I was mentioning, I, I realized that I was speaking my art, my own jargon. I wasn't talking about public health, I mean, public school education, like that classroom education. One of the, one of the expectations sometimes of public health practitioners is, we don't need regulation, we just need to educate people. And so what I was really referring to is, doing health education is really important. Look, we've been talking about the problem of tobacco for how long? We've been educating our butts off. People are still smoking. Right? So that's what I was really referring there. There's no question that classroom education, absolutely. So thank you for giving me that opportunity to clarify that.
And if I could, because we've just gone through the marijuana scene here with council and commission, and that was a tough call, because fifty-one percent of the people in Oregon City voted to legalize marijuana. But on one side, like you're saying, we've educated and spent tons of money and everything, because it's, you know, smoking is bad for you, but fifty-one percent of the people said it's okay for marijuana. Even though I don't, well, most people smoke it, but, you know, I'm, so that was a, that's a tough call, so I don't know what we're doing here, you know, this is tough.
It is tough. It is tough. Any other questions?
Maybe a comment.
Yeah.
I know the immediate focus tends to be on the disenfranchised and their access to care, but you know, the entire health system in America is broken.
Correct.
And I mean, there's people that forego medication that have paid their way through life, have to make choices whether to eat or get their medication. And those problems I know are insurmountable for a small group like this. And I guess then I'd focus on your question here, the strengths of the health equity zones. Tremendous, as Mayor Neely, a statistician himself, and I know, we do a lot with statistics, and they're, they're both valuable and they can be misleading. And the fact that you broke it down into smaller populations that, that are more identifiable, I think was a very good move.
Thank you.
Because it's very easy to get lost with terms like the mean and the median, and then become meaningless
Correct.
In a, in a population that's so diversified. So I have to give you credit for many of that, but I also struggle with, it's very easy to misinterpret a cause-effect relationship.
Right.
I mean, maybe some of the lowest-income houses have the most dedication to furthering their education, so.
You bet.
I question, you know, I don't want to make an immediate assumption from, from the statistics, but I, I applaud the effort.
I appreciate that. So yeah, I totally agree with you. As, as a data geek as well, we have to be very careful. One of the things that certainly won't make it perfect, because data's not perfect, is to carry on with that, to give you a little additional faith that we're being very thoughtful about this. Before we introduce those health equity zones to the community, such as what we're doing tonight, as an accredited organization, as we mentioned, one of our responsibilities that we have to do is do ethical deliberations. That's our responsibility as a public health. So give me an example. If that earthquake ever comes, you know, I don't know if I, hurricanes are earthquakes, I don't, I'm confused as a Floridian, I just, I'm confused. But if that earthquake comes, and a hospital runs out of any type of electricity, they have to make ethical decisions on who do they save and who do they let die. And those are ethical decisions that you have to make every single day. In certain episodic conditions with public health, we have to do the same thing. And so we are always very mindful to keep ethics and ethical lens in the work and the decisions that we make. So we have to do at least one, we're actually doing three, but at least one, because we're overachievers, at least one ethical deliberation a year. And we chose to do the health equity zones, and we brought in an ethicist. We paid for him to come in, he worked with our advisory committee, and we took those health equity zones and took probably about a good three hours and went through all of them to ensure that we were not going to, that we could mitigate any negative impact or any kind of ethical consequences of doing these types of health equity zones. We're very mindful of it. We want to make sure that it has an asset perspective, that it's not punitive, or that we don't get into this labeling, right? So if you have a zone that sort of has some health disparities or some ground zero, some, some things there, that we don't get into a situation where we're comparing the, the zones, and now we have a negative thing. So I really appreciate that, because it's affirming that, that we're getting a good response from it, but I also wanted to share with you that we are really taking good care to do this as appropriate as we can. So thank you.
I suspect that's the first step, and from there, you're going to have to drill down into individual categories and see the cause-effect relationship.
If the data is available, yes. So some of the maps that we are running, we didn't have, you know, time to do it here, and certainly we would love to share it with you if you'd like that information, but we're able to take some data and drill it down into the census block. When you're looking at the data that we have, you really don't want to go smaller than that, because then you can start identifying people, and that is, that's a no-go for us. So the census block is probably the smallest that we want to go into. We could go down to the address, because we have that data. I mean, I can tell you, I wouldn't, but I could tell you who has an STD and where they live, but we would never map that, because that is unethical. And so, so those are the types of things that we put in place to ensure that we're protecting the health's identifying, identifying information as well.
So the unasked question.
Okay.
What are the sources of funding for these activities that you engage in?
Yeah, we're really lean. We're really lean. We, we do a really well, a good job. We have federal dollars, not a whole lot. We have state dollars, and then we have county general funds. So we probably have the smallest budget of the three counties, the three, in the three region, and the smallest county contributions. So we have forty-eight employees, give and take a couple of part-timers that are in there, and a health officer, and then myself.
So what is this, this whole study thing from beginning to end? What's, what's the cost?
Oh, this? Oh, my goodness. I don't know if I can do that off the top of my head. We don't bring in a consultant, we do this ourselves, so it's employee time, but we have staff that are dedicated to do this.
Well, it's program, you must budget it, right?
Say that again?
It's a program like any other, so you must budget it.
Of course it is. Of course it is. We have multiple people, like Jamie doesn't, she has a whole another job, but part of her time is this. And so I have probably about, oh heck, fifteen to sixteen people, bits and pieces that touch this, and so I'd have to calculate how much time that they're doing. This assessment actually takes about six to eight months to do. Once we're done with this, we're not done with this. Then we go into the Community Health Improvement Plan, which is the strategy. So we find the need.
Right, I was talking about beginning to end.
Yes.
So you're only in the first third.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, but this is part of our responsibility by law to do this. So it's, this is not bells and whistles. This is what we are in, you look at all the county health departments across the country, and they're required to do this. So it's not unique to us.
Which may be a problem. I mean, government seems to be doing a lot of things that it doesn't need to do, so. Your honor, did you have anything?
Okay.
Cash, one last question. What, what is the healthiest county in the state? You said that we were number two.
Washington.
Washington?
Mm-hmm.
Just curious.
That's interesting.
Yeah, well, it brings up more questions, but that's okay.
I'd be more than happy to give you more afterwards, if you'd like. Okay.
Thank you for time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
So who's doing the police facility bond measure? Is that going to be Chief Band? Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I don't have a whole lot of information other than what we went over at the goal session, but I'm just going to run through it and answer any questions that you have, along with some history, just because I think it's important to talk about the fee anytime we have this conversation. I do want to point out, in fact, it might be good, Brendan Watkins and Diana Schweitzer, they're both from Piper Jopri. If you guys want to come up and maybe just sit at the front.
Yeah, sure.
They don't really have a presentation, but they are bond folks, and so any questions, they're here just to answer your questions, rather than have me stumble my way through explaining anything about bonds, which I've learned is very complicated to me. So, how's my next slide? Katie?
Oh, it's good.
No, how do I get there?
You've got slides, too?
Okay. So, C-Save, I, I want to talk about the fee just really quick. There's something that, that I think needs to be stated every time we have this conversation, because it seems to be either people don't understand it, or they, or they forget it, but some important things, because what, what ends up coming up in this conversation is, where did this fee come from? Why did you do a fee? And why did you not just go out to the, to voters and, and see if, and ask for a regular measure like everybody knows? The, the one way that generally, that that gets done.
A general obligation bond.
If, if it's a GO bond, yeah, but not, that's, what I meant more was, where people go out and ask, can we raise taxes to, to go for a bond? When we started looking at this, we were trying to look with a different set of eyes. I was kind of motivated looking at, there were some property transactions we were doing, and there was something that I saw in the, you know the Barclay School? Way back when, like a hundred years ago, when that was dedicated, there was verbiage that said, if this ever goes out of the hands of a public school, it will go back to the city. And I was thinking about whoever was making these decisions way back then, they were thinking that far into the future, a hundred years into the future of the city. Frankly, I was a little, I, I wished that there was money set aside for this police department that I'd always heard that we were going to do. So my goal wasn't so much our goal, there were a lot of people who worked on this, but are there other ways to skin the cat? I knew of the one way that everybody knows, but are there other ways that other cities have done things? And that's where the, the fee came from. We, we have fees that pay for infrastructure, concrete roads that run through our city, and a city building is also concrete infrastructure in our city. Why not look into this fee idea? And, and what I think is really, 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 really important for people to remember, because I know that people have, there are some people who have some ire about us not going out the conventional way that everybody knows that I talked about. And, and when I've had people call me upset about this, they talk about the fee kind of like it was done in a back room, or that somehow a commission just did this without any feedback or something like that, and I don't think that's completely fair to the process that we went through back when that happened. The way that, I, it was very transparent, the way that we went about this fee. The commission at the time, we went and said, hey, this is an idea. We want to go farm this idea everywhere to anyone who will listen in the city, see what they think. And then after collecting that information, we want to bring it back to you, and then give it all to you, and then make a decision about whether or not this is right for the city. If people think this is a good idea, we'll tell you it's a good idea. If they hate it, we'll come tell you that they hate it. Long story short, was the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. They liked the fact that the fee hit a lot of people that property taxes would not hit. At the end of the day, it was six fifty a month versus the average homeowner paying ten dollars a month. People liked that, and for a variety of reasons that we've talked about. But I do think that that's really important to remember, that this fee was done in a transparent way. People might not like it, and I understand that, but overwhelmingly, what the public said is, yeah, that's a good idea, go tell the commission that. I did, and this P, this fee was passed in January two thousand and sixteen. Since then, we're at about one point seven million dollars that that's collected. So the good news is, regardless of what a potential bond measure nets in September, even if the answer's no, down the road, when we're all, when someone else is sitting in all these seats, they're going to be making a decision, because we've been saving money for many years, and we'll build a building then, worst-case scenario. That's a win to me. Now, the feedback that we got, as you know, we went out last November at a very busy time. The feedback, I had people in the community seeking me out who never seek me out, people I know, people I don't know, and what the overwhelming feedback was, was that the language was unclear. We did not understand what that was. I thought you weren't going to raise our taxes, and it said that you might raise our taxes. And as I went back and looked at it, I, I get it. I had officers' parents calling them going, what the heck? This is not what you told me it was going to be. And that simply is kind of the nature of a GO bond. There has to be language in there that, that says very, as transparently as possible, that the city, if they have to, will raise taxes. We couldn't say, we're not going to raise your taxes.
Hold on, hold on. I thought this was a revenue bond, not a GO bond.
The original was a GO bond.
Oh.
The first time around in November was a GO bond.
But we could come back with a revenue bond.
That's what we're proposing right now.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm just going over kind of what, why we're back, the, the feedback. Because if we didn't have that feedback, we wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be coming back. So currently, where are we at? We're leasing the building to the Merrill Hirsch School. We are talking right now about maybe extending that lease for a year. It is expensive to, to be a property owner, but we're kind of mitigating some of those costs by leasing it right now. We are also in the We are also in the process, as you're aware, of Laura and C.D. are figuring out how we can use that annex building, which is the newest piece of that property. Seven thousand square feet, I think it is. So. Revenue bond. Why a revenue bond? It allows for cleaner language. So if, if you look just at the ballot title, the drafts that are a part of, of what are in here, it is very clean. The, the first sentence in that title, in the summary, approval of this measure will not authorize the city to impose additional taxes. The revenue bond allows us to, to basically tie the repayment directly to that fee, giving people the guarantee, the taxpayer, at least the ability to make a very informed decision of using the money from the fee to pay back the bond. It also gives them the guarantee that their taxes are not gonna be raised, which was the other part of the feedback. The downside to a revenue bond, the one downside is it's a little more expensive. Carol Samuels, and these folks can speak more to that, but I had asked her the, the high end of what we would borrow, and I can talk about the cost of the project if you'd like. But basically, we're looking at probably the most we would be able to borrow, depending on rates and everything at the time, would be sixteen million dollars. And if that were the case, I asked her what, what would the cost differential be of a GO to a more expensive revenue bond? And she said, I think she looked at some other bonds that had come in. It's, they're no, they're much different than a standard loan. It's not like a bank loan. But she said roughly, over the course of the repayment, it'd be somewhere between one hundred and two hundred thousand dollars more. So that's, that guarantee you're buying is, is a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars more in interest. Options. First option, do nothing. C-Save, our fee will continue to collect. We'll build. The obvious considerations for that are, we've got a police department that has been growing. And what, what that unfunded mandate that we have from the state of meeting seismic standards, what do we do about that? You know, I don't really know. There's also the consideration, if we're long, what do we do with the property that we have? Obviously, that annex building's gonna be used. But if we wait fifteen years, what, what is in our best in the school building that we have right now? The other option, moving forward with a revenue bond measure. That's the extent of my presentation. I'll say one last thing and then open up for questions. Reminder, our approximate cost of this project is about twenty million dollars. Now, where that comes from is the original amount was lower than that when, so we paid a vendor, we paid an architect to cost this project for us back when it first happened. And the average, they give you a low and a high. And the middle was about eighteen million dollars. We went back to them and asked for some updates based on what street improvements would cost us because that had not been included in their original amount. I think a year and a half, two years had gone by. So in their updated amount, they said, here's what street improvements are gonna be. Oh, by the way, construction has gone up considerably in that short period of time. Now, now your, your middle point is twenty million dollars instead. That about twenty million dollars is roughly where it is. So how that twenty million dollars, how we would get to that? Because if you remember, I said that the bond would be at, at the high end, sixteen million dollars. The rest of that would come from, we would be somewhere close to two and a half, maybe three million dollars that we'll have saved in our fee at that time that would go toward this project. And then the other thing is the sell of our building. We, the city owns the property that we're on right now. It's a little over two acres in a great place. I already know two people who have interest in purchasing it. And we don't know for sure, but we think somewhere two to three million dollars that we would be able to sell that and put that toward the project. One benefit of that, that we've stated before, is that that would then go back onto the tax rolls. So if you have any questions for me or for our, our bond folks here, fire away.
Well, to start with, when you say the last sentence was move forward, like the next commission meeting or something approving the, the ballot title language?
Yeah, so, so, thank you. Sorry. The point kind of of this conversation was to get any concerns, issues, things you wanted ironed out. We plan on bringing this back at, at the commission meeting next Wednesday for approval and to be put on the September nineteenth election.
So I assume you have a political action committee and folks that are set up to actually run a campaign at this point?
Well, I don't know about me. I can't act in that way in an official capacity. I, I can tell you that there are people who are having conversations. I'm part of those conversations outside of my work.
My only suggestion would be is that, is that you engage the services of a professional campaign consultant for this thing. These are, a campaign is like any other process and you need to have someone who knows what they're doing in order to make it successful. And I think part of why we didn't succeed last time was that there wasn't such a person on the team.
Although, as staff, they need to remain neutral. That's my understanding.
Correct.
And, and if, if a member of the public wants to speak up or, you know, step up and create a PAC, that's up, that's up to them.
I'm merely putting it out there into the ether for people to absorb.
I'm just clarifying.
There's at least one bearded individual in this room who's listening.
And so in the, in the attachments you'll see is the, is the ballot title, the proposed explanatory statement. You know, this is building on from our goal-setting retreat when we talked about, you know, how to move forward with this project. And then the goals that were adopted by the commission included moving forward, trying to get on the September election, which would be getting the ballot title approved at our next meeting in May. So really, this is an opportunity to kind of look at the revenue versus the GO and, you know, if you have any concerns with the ballot title or ballot language.
I have an ex, a question for the chief, an explanatory question. I have a number of comments about the ballot language. So you mentioned that the disparity between the sixteen and twenty million, you said we, we affected a two and a half million dollar fee savings?
No, that's what we say so far.
That's what we, that's.
Oh, that's, that's what we've accrued. Is that what you're saying?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Fee saves about one point one million.
I see. I, I misunderstood the meaning of the phrase. I guess I would comment, I mean, it's got a cap on it, sixteen million, right? I'd comment on the ballot title because my, I think the first, there's an innate distrust of government in any form by the population. And I think whenever you're presenting, whether it be a speech or a piece of written information, you gotta get the information right up front. You gotta, you gotta take care of all questions in the first few words because I don't think a lot of people read past that. So when I read the, the ballot title, and that may be the only thing that's ever read by the voter. So that needs to be highly effective. And it says about, about not raising taxes. Do we want to make a statement about fees and no additional fees in support of this program would be imposed?
No.
We don't?
No.
Okay, why would we not want to?
Because you just don't want to put that out there at all.
Okay. All right, then it becomes an unanswered question. And then in the explanatory statement, I guess the same question I would pose and your answer would be the same, that you don't want to put that out there.
Well, I, I, under the, in the, in the summary, approval of this measure will not authorize the city to impose additional taxes. I think that's good. But, you know, trying to, trying to go deeper into that argument, all it does is raise questions rather than answer them.
Okay, I, I was taking a preemptive approach rather than have to respond to those that would throw that challenge at you. That's two different approaches.
From the statements I heard from people, why they voted no, it was because they were confused, thinking that, you know, we're already paying for this thing and now you're asking us to pay more money. So we wanted to be really clear that, you know, we're not asking for any additional money in this ballot.
So I, I, I've got a couple of comments just to your comments, just so, a couple of things. I, I agree with everything that was said. One, one thing I'll tell you is, if I sent you all the emails of the drafts that we have already had with these between bond people, bond counsel, me, Tony, Katie, Wyatt, it's exhaustive. And, and one of the things, it is a little frustrating with the language because I, I agree with what you say. In terms of everything that we do or everything that a PAC would do, if that ballot title doesn't hit it, it, it doesn't.
It won't.
That is, that is the most important thing. Now, it is interesting. I don't think we had the conversation of, will not authorize the city to impose additional taxes or fees. That might be an interesting thing because you are saying, and it is true, we are not going to incur additional fees. We have never, we have never talked about those two words. That might not.
See, of all the people you mentioned that you've run this by, no, not one of them is a politician.
Doing that now.
Not one of them has, has, has run a campaign. And a, and a campaign this size, it's not something that, that while I'll give you my two cents, I don't feel like I'm qualified to, to answer the question about what this looks like. I really think that, and I don't think it's, it's illegal for us to hire a consultant in a very tight box to say, what do you think about these, this language?
Correct.
I think that would be a worthy exercise to do.
One, one thing that, that I will say, that, that our attorney is extremely, well, and, and actually Carol's been really, is we cannot, nothing in any of these documents can come across as favorable. We, they're very, you would not believe how careful they are for us.
No, I.
It has to be completely objective.
It can be informational.
Yes.
And maybe there's a thin line, but informational is important to the voter. I, I speak from the position of having been running for election during your last campaign for this. And I saw the presentations. I saw many of them because I was campaigning at these, these meetings, you know, the neighborhood associations and we could have done better. I mean, the, the proposal could have been presented better. A number of proposals could have been presented better. So I would defer to the mayor's advice as to who we engage to put this matter forward.
I have a few comments.
Okay, Brian raised as a, in whatever order.
Every nod has already hit the button.
Oh, I was not on the floor here, sorry. Mr. Megabird.
Mine went away. So I had a couple of comments on the ballot title and then on the explanation. I think the ballot title needs to give more specifics about the structure. How big is it? Where is it gonna be? How many offers is it gonna have? Why are we doing this? Because our community is expanding. We need safer facilities. It's not just because seismic. Seismic doesn't excite people. It's like they're gonna get more safety. They're gonna get better.
Are you in the question or the summary?
I'm at the, the summary, the ballot title. Because there's so much more that illustrates that you've really done your homework and you've, you've developed a clear concept about this that does not come through here. And I think would help make a more compelling, more thorough explanation, not an argument.
In the summary, you're saying?
In this ballot title. Unless you're restricted by the number of words.
We, we are, but I will look, I think that's. So two, it's two things. I think, one, the challenge, I think it's a great comment and I'm gonna take all this back. I think the, the place where we get, and some of the things we've said in here that have been deleted have, are, there are things that I state that I think are a fact, that attorneys think are advocacy. So we, we, but I will, I will look into that and I will see where we are in, in, in. There's only so much we can put here and there's only so much we can put here, but.
So moving on to the explanatory statement, building on the classic rule of journalism, who, what, where, when, how, and the first paragraph, this doesn't do it. I would jump right down to the third paragraph after studying alternatives. First, the sentence should be, we're asking your permission to build a thirty-three thousand building on Holcomb Lane to provide better police service. Then it has the details of the building and the bond measure and all that. And then you go down to the last paragraph about what it's all gonna do. That's fantastic. And then you move down to the Oregon law and the very last you do the history. Because, you know, we're thinking about now. We really don't care so much about the history. If you have a limited bandwidth of attention span.
Very smart. The more words you have, the less likely it is that the average voter is gonna read all of them.
So put your most important ones first.
Agreed.
Can you put a picture in there?
No pictures allowed. Anything else?
Nope.
Yep, I have a couple. On the ballot title, let me go there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
No, I'm last.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The, the question itself, what is the valid, my, my, my question is, what is the value of using the words a principal in a principal amount? I know that there's a certain number of words that, was it twenty words or something for the, the question? But is it really important to have in a principal amount? Or are you trying to say that there's principal and interest? And, I mean, I'm, why can't we just say, shall Oregon City issue bonds up to sixteen million dollars? Or, yes, any, whatever, to provide police and municipal court facility, a police?
You guys wanna?
Is that a legal requirement to state that?
I don't know if the actual, like delineation between principal and interest is required in terms of the actual document that's submitted to voters. But I'd imagine, you're just working with Ann Sherman, right?
Carol.
Or is your, oh, Carol McCug?
No, sorry.
Oh, your lawyers. Oh, Golgin, okay. Same firm, just all different lawyers. I'm sure, and I know Golgin very well. She's very thorough. She does a great job. And I'm sure she would advocate at least on the side of, I guess, trying to minimize confusion. And if you just say sixteen million dollars, I know personally, I would assume that includes principal and interest. But if you're not explicitly clear, some people might make that jump, whether it's unfair or not.
Okay, I would, I would err on the side of being, you know, clear and, and simple. So shall, shall Oregon City issue bonds up to sixteen million to provide a police and municipal court facility? I, I would remove that simply because it, it puts another question in my mind. Well, if that's the principle.
The par amount, though. There are certain items that have to appear. One of which is the, and I'm speaking mostly from experience in general obligation bonds. It's, you guys are kind of a unique situation where you have to go to voter approval for other types of debt. But I know in general obligation bonds, two items have to appear. And that is the par amount or principal amount and the maturity length. You don't have to include like a levy amount or anything like that, but those other, but those two data points do have to show up in some form.
Okay, well, if, I guess I'm here to think, say that if it didn't need to be there, it would be my preference to not. But, you know, I would need to get the consensus of the commission for that, I guess. But, and my second thought is, on the explanatory statement, let me pull that up. The very, at the very beginning, it says, this measure would not allow the city to raise taxes. And I was just wondering if we should put the words approval of this measure would not allow the city to raise taxes? Because I'm just throwing that out there.
What's your total word count on the explanatory statement, Katie?
We're under the five hundred.
So you have five hundred total and you're what, at four fifty or something?
I'm not sure. Yeah, but we have, we have some room.
Okay. I, I don't see a problem with putting approval of.
Yeah, I think it just makes it a little more clear. And then I think the same sentence is at the bottom, or is in the second to the last paragraph, last sentence. This measure would not allow the city to raise taxes. Again, approval of this measure, if you're going to say that twice. And then the other suggestion I had is, in the first paragraph, what talks about the population, says, today, the population of Oregon City has nearly doubled to over thirty-five thousand residents. Um, and it's, that's incorrect. It should say, um, "Today, the population has more than doubled." Not nearly doubled, but more than doubled. Because sixteen, it, it was 16,000 in 1980, and, and doubled would be 32, but it's 35,000 now. So, anyway, just a minor little thing. Um, that's all on that. And then, um, the last comment I have is on the resolution. And in the title of the resolution, um, I know that, um, one of the, one of the concerns from the previous election was that it, things weren't clear. And I think that this is another case. Um, the last three words of the title, "A Community Safety Facility", um, here again, we're, we're talking about, um-
I agree with you.
Yeah, that it should be that-
Police and court, police and court facility.
Municipal court facility, so-
So, one, one that I will, if we have had a couple of versions since what you're seeing, that has been fixed. Um, in every place, it says-
Except here.
Police and municipal court facility.
Okay. Um, and then I don't know if, I didn't read through the whole resolution, but if it says the same thing somewhere else in there, that, let me try and check.
Well, the resolution, in the scheme of things, really isn't important because all it's really doing is-
I understand that, but-
Sending it out to, to the vote.
But I think we want to be consistent in our message.
We can do a spell check and rub it.
And that was the only, comments ahead.
Mr. Shaw.
Chief, you said, "Well, we really don't have a choice now of a geo-bond or a revenue bond." Because we've tried the geo-bond.
No, you go out again.
Try again.
But that's, but you have to change the language in the ballot. And we go back to what the ballot title was, because it has to be in there that there's a possibility of raising taxes. So, we cannot do that. That didn't work. We're trying to be as clear and, and concise in that ballot title as we can, and the only way we're gonna do that is to go to a revenue bond.
I, I would, uh, the, yeah, I, the, the way I would say it is, we could go back. We could try and get different about how we were, the, at the end of the day, the, the benefit of this is two things. It presents the cleanest question to the voter, and it also allows us to give them a guarantee in that, in that, that the measure would not, if approved, allow the city to raise taxes. Those are, it, I, I think they're very compelling reasons to, to do a revenue bond.
Mm-hmm.
I think if that, if, if, if the last one had, had that guarantee, it would have passed.
Yes.
And despite what the mayor feels, I still feel it's important to say, "Or impose additional fees in support of this project." But that's, that's for those that have crafted this document. That's, you get X number of words to spend. You spend them wisely. You make it clear and you keep it simple.
In the ballot title, the question should read, "Shall Oregon City issue revenue bonds?", not geo-bonds.
They're, they're limited in the number of words there, I know, um, if it's, will you just say this?
Technically, you don't actually want to say revenue bonds. Um, I, I, I know for the sake of our discussion here, these are functionally revenue bonds. These are paid from revenues generated from a fee that's attached to water bill. But in a more technical sense, these would be full faith and credit obligations uh, that are backed by the revenue of those fees. And if you start saying something like revenue bond, that's like an actual legally defined term. And then that would inadvertently box you into a different type of, um, issuance than what you guys would want to do.
Aren't we doing a revenue bond?
No, it, not, no, it's, it's technically, it's, and this is, this is kind of like a, uh, getting too deep in the weeds. So, uh, please stop me if I get too jargony, but, uh-
Stop!
Thank you, Jim.
That's the problem with this, like, bond folks.
Let me, let me, yeah, let me make the explanation simple. So, the revenue bond, if we were buying, um, if we, if we're doing 10 miles of, of water pipe, we would base whatever bonding capacity we had on the revenue from the rates that we were currently bringing in. Okay? And that's how that would happen, but we can't technically do that with this.
Because the police isn't generating revenue.
Correct.
Right.
Exactly.
The-
The fee is raising revenue.
Right, oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, so the revenue from the fee is paying it, and that's why I said at the beginning, functionally, you know, it's from the view of the city, it is a revenue bond. But in terms of like how the legal, uh, security is structured and written up and then presented in, uh, to potential bond investors, uh, there we have to be very clear that the, uh, authorizing resolution doesn't say revenue bond, like the ballot title and stuff doesn't say revenue bond. Because once you start saying, the author, once the authorizing resolution starts, you know, saying terms like this, that actually then determines what you can actually do in the bond market as well. The authorized resolution doesn't have a ton of detail. The few bits of detail that are in there are paramount and final.
If I can just interrupt real quick, I'm gonna excuse myself. I have the Berkeley Hills Neighborhood Association at 7:00. And then, um, just when you're done under communications, Mr. Lewis has an update on the Ermiting House for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, what he just said in the last five minutes is a tiny glimpse into dozens of, dozens of, dozens of emails and several hours on the phone, going through these things that, that have led to where these are. But I, literally every comment, we're gonna, with those same folks, we're gonna go over the, all that stuff. I, I think a lot of the answers are gonna be kind of some of the stuff that he said, but, but they're, I mean, there's some real simple stuff that is way better than what we had.
I get all that, but I still think that, um, running this by a political consultant would be worth whatever we had to pay for it. It's not gonna be a ton of money. And someone who has experience running statewide tax campaigns or other kinds of campaigns may be able to ha- have that one word, the, the one combination of words that meets the lawyer's thing, but also does what we're trying to do. And I don't think that's advocating, I, you know, the folks I'm talking about have done this a million times and have heard all the lawyer language and all that stuff.
And they, they think that this person would also be able to, uh, tell us how to coordinate a campaign out in the community.
Well, see, you can't, you, you, you-
Isn't this what this person does?
Yeah, but we can't do that.
So, it's a separate, different person?
The city can't pay for that.
You can. I can.
Well, no, I mean, that's just, can that person direct a public bond?
It could be, it could be the same person giving advice to Jim on the wording of the ballot title as works with a separate PAC in the community.
That's where I'm going.
Could be the same person.
Somehow we have to educate.
But they couldn't be paid from the city to do that work. They could get paid from the city to that little bit of work.
Because that's, I think, where we-
Yeah.
We didn't, we could not get out to the suburbia.
Yeah, there's a, there's a very fine line. It's not even a fine line. It's a big wide black line that if you cross over, you're dead.
But I just want to make sure we have some effort to educate the suburbs that we missed this time. Somehow we learned a lot of things from this last one, you know, and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to correct here now for this one.
Okay, anybody else? Then I think this horse is dead. Thanks for your time today. I appreciate it.
Thanks for having us. Thanks for coming.
So, uh, last on the agenda, Natural Resources Committee project request. Mr. Turway.
Thank you very much. So, at the goal-setting work session in January of this year, we received, uh, some comment from Mayor Doug Neely on behalf of the Natural Resources Committee with a couple of requests. And at that time, we said that we would take a look at them and get back to you regarding those requests at a work session. And so, that's what I'm here to do today, is just give you an update. There was two main requests. The first was a request to identify signage at our major stream of a roadway and a stream occur. And, um, with this first request, I am very happy to announce, um, a really great partnership that happened, specifically led by the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council. They went out, um, since this request happened and received a grant from the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board to receive funding to create signs. And they worked with Natural Resources Committee to identify the top, um, certain number of s- streams that needed signage. And they worked with, um, Martin Montalvo, our Public Works Operations Manager, to have the matching part of that grant. And so, Martin will pay for the poles and put the signs in the ground. And so, what we saw was really great leadership on behalf of the Natural Resources Committee and the Greater Oregon City Watershed, and specifically, uh, Mayor, Mayor Neely, who is on both of those committees. And so, we are happy to announce that of this ask, um, we are doing it and we're crossing it off the list. And so, there will be 13 signs that will be placed near roadways that will identify streams and provide some education and outreach about our streams to the public.
Wow, alright.
Yeah, so, um, this one, I am happy to report that, um, we're all working together and it seems to be working well.
Great.
Yes. A, so the second request is a two-parter, and it's very jargony. And so, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background first, but it's to reevaluate our natural resource overlay district map. And because I know that was a mouthful of a sentence to say, I want to give you a little bit of background on what our natural resource overlay district is. So, it is an overlay district that protects the land adjacent to streams and wetlands. It do, it's not protecting the stream and wetland itself. Um, other entities do that, like Department of State Lands, DSL, um, or the Corps. And so, what the city protects is the area, the place between the stream and development. We want to make sure that you have a water feature, whatever that is, a wetland or stream, and that you have lush native vegetation, then you have development. And this is a little bit different than how we used to act back in the day. So, we have these three distinct things. We don't regulate the feature itself. We regulate the top of bank of the feature and then some type of setback. That setback is different based on what the feature is. If it's got fish, it's bigger. If it doesn't have fish or it's seasonal, it's smaller. It ranges anywhere between 15 to 200 feet is our maximum from the feature, is this vegetated corridor. And so, you can kind of see on there, there's some images. When development occurs, you'll see this, uh, delineation of the feature itself and then development. That's not really a great picture of the vegetated corridor, because if it was here, it would have a lot of trees and, um, shrubs and things like that. This one's sort of a new one. It's not really planted yet. Um, but that's what the point of the natural resource overlay district is, is to regulate that vegetated corridor. And when development comes in, we delineate where it's at. We have wetland scientists and things like that figure out where it is. And then we generally put it in tracks and it goes for protection of that stream. So, you can see here, this subdivision is built and this, this stream corridor, the, on the map, the purple is the natural resource overlay district. We make it a little bit bigger than we think that it is, so we have some wiggle room for mapping because, um, we're just mapping. And so, when the development comes in, they figure out exactly where that feature is and delineate it. But you can see this translation of the purple line on the map to what got built, which is the clear delineation. And some places where they need to build in the vegetated corridor a little bit, they have to mitigate for that, which means you gotta plant some plants and make it better than it is right now. Remove all the nuisance species and plant native species, um, and there's regulations on ratios to that. So, the overall purpose of the natural resource overlay district is to create great habitat, to create healthy streams and to create, um, have shade from the trees nearby so that this water temperature is cool, so that the fish can live. And then also, um, the city's regulations, the vegetated corridor, take into account some requirements for the animals and critters that live next to the stream. So, we have, um, requirements now out of nature in the neighborhoods, uh, which is Metro Title 13, to have a space for habitat to roam. So, we, in Oregon City, combine the two, the stream protection with the habitat area. It just sort of makes sense, right? And, um, there's a whole list of regulations in that very small font on there of why we have to do this. But, so there's state law, there's goals, there's metro titles, there's our comprehensive plan, which of course is our guiding document for the city, there's Clean Water Act, there's all sorts of reasons. But we do it because it is helpful for our environment. It creates a nice city. It creates a nice, um, place for critters to go. It creates a nice place, um, or open space component as well.
So, who takes care of it?
Uh, so who takes care of the natural resource overlay district areas? It depends, which is the typical answer for a community development, right? So, it's normally the property owner. But it depends. If it goes in a track, they can dedicate that track to the city most often, um, or it could be an easement on private property. So, it's up to the development that occurs at the time. So, it does get delineated. Um, so the city does end up maintaining a lot of it.
So, what's to prevent, you know, five years down the road, this being overrun by BlackBerries and Kudzu?
Yeah, Martin, because Martin does a really good job. But we do see a split. We see a lot of homeowners' associations that do maintain them through their subdivisions. And so, sometimes when we do get that, um, degradation of that species, we do have to go in, um, through code enforcement.
Okay.
But, yep. So, this is a two-part of this request number two. So, there's only two parts, two requests, and this request number two has two parts. One is, now that we've had all that background and we're all experts on our natural resource overlay district, what happened in this past year is that we found a wetland. And the wetland is in the purple overlay district that's mapped on this map. It is, um, it's just not. So, we have regulations that say, if you're in the purple and we find a wetland that we didn't know existed or a stream we didn't know existed, that's fine. We can now regulate that area. Or if you find a stream lit, a, a wetland and part of it's touching the purple, we can now regulate that, the vegetated corridor around the wetland because parts of it's touching. What we can't regulate is nothing that doesn't touch anything. So, any feature that's unconnected to a system. And that's what we found. And it was in Kanema. And so, remember, we regulate the vegetated corridor next to the feature? So, a property owner found a wetland. DSL, Department of State Lands, came in and they regulate wetlands. So, they came in and did a delineation, which is, um, on the screen. So, they draw the line on the map to say, "This is the wetland." And typically, we would have a 50-foot buffer from their line out. And we would say, "Development, please stay out of this area." We couldn't do that in this case because it's not within our overlay district. And so, we, the first ask was that we put a buffer around, um, this feature that we found. And I have to say that I've been here 14 years, and this is the only one that I could think of, as well as any of our other colleagues in the planning department, that we found that's not within the overlay district, which is a good thing because it's rare. Um, so, it, what it means is that, um, remember all those lists of regulations that we have to comply with? We still comply with those. Just because we found a feature that we didn't have protected doesn't mean we don't comply. We still comply. And the city is investigating what it means now that we found a feature that is outside our overlay district. So, the questions are, are we obligated to protect it? And if we are, what is the timeframe associated with that? If we are not, then we could set our own timeframe of when we want to regulate it because we want to regulate it, because it's a feature that we, um, because we believe in protection of our, um, natural resources. So, that is something that we're looking into, is, do we have a regulatory obligation and timeline associated with that? If not, then we can move forward with regulation when we have the resources to do so. So, it will cost money and it will cost time. And so, figuring out what that is, um, and if we have a legal obligation is the first step, yes.
Is this one lot?
Well, this is one lot that found it, but presumably it's connected to some lots nearby. So, like, on the map right here-
And what is this thing?
It's a wetland. It's a wetland. And then also-
And how do we, you know, I mean, we've been around here since like 1840, so how do we miss a wetland after doing all this mapping and all this other stuff?
That's a fair question.
Was it this year after this winter?
Um-
The 100-year storm?
Maybe before the winter. No, it's a legitimate wetland.
Okay.
There, so the applicant ended up hiring a scientist and they go on site and they look for, there's indicators of a wetland. So, it's not weather-related. It is an actual wetland that does exist. And we missed it. There's no other- There's no other way to say it, we missed it, we should have got it, we didn't. And we didn't know that it existed. And we don't know what we don't know, and we don't know what else is out there. But what we do know is that in 14 years, this is the only one that we think that we've missed. But that doesn't mean that there's not others. So, in short, we're working on it, we're just figuring out what our regulatory requirements are. The second request, or part two, which is the last request, is to redo our whole inventory, right? So it's sort of put questions out there as to how valid is our data? Our inventory has grown over time. So on the picture is our natural resource overlay inventory that we did in 1999. That was a big deal. That included boots on the ground, validating properties. We went back and checked with a couple of consultants to figure out how much that would be if we were to redo it today. And the initial estimate was 125,000. Maybe a little shy, but it's walking around each of the properties to figure out, is there a wetland now, or there was no wetland? There is some concern that if we redo this study, there's a couple of things. One, we may find new wetlands, presumably. And then also, we may find where we thought that there were wetlands dried up, or streams have changed, or things like that. So we might find changes both ways. What we did do is we updated our code in 2009. We updated the code, we also updated the map. And the map is the big thing, so that purple map with all those little spidery lines. And in 2009, we updated it with LiDAR data, which is, uses lasers to try and figure out where those buffers are. The buffers used to be really, really big, and we were able to refine them in places that we knew that they weren't. So what that meant is, if you want to do development on your property, there was a fair number of properties who were in the purple. And because we had better data, they got removed from the purple. So we knew the stream wasn't on there, and we didn't need to have them deal with this regulatory barrier, because we knew the stream was nowhere near them. We also had input from biologists at Metro, and then we use Title III and 13 maps, which is jargony. But it's maps that look at natural resource protection, as well as that nature in the neighborhoods component for the critters. So we did that in 2009, but that's where we sit today. We have an inventory that was originally done with boots on the ground in 1999. We updated a little bit, but we never got more boots on the ground. So, with this ask, we recognize that this is an important thing. And it is something that we do need to look at periodically, to make sure that our information is right and our regulatory triggers are correct. But knowing that we think that our inventory is actually quite good, because there's only one that we've seen, though it is one, we can work on that one separately. But we're not really seeing a need at this point to go in and do a complete new study. And there is also some restrictions I have. I only have, you know, on this side of current planning, I have two planners and an assistant planner. And that does all of our development review, plus the equitable housing study, I mean, all of these things. So we don't really have the staff capacity to do it today. But we'll continue to put it on the list, because it should be done, but maybe not today. And it is a priority for us to protect our natural resources, but again, we kind of think the data's pretty good. We did miss a spot, though, so we all acknowledge that. And we'll continue to figure out, we'll put it on the list, and we'll try and get money, because $120,000 is a lot by the time we actually get there, probably a little bit more, to make sure that we have really good data. Perhaps the data sets will be better with better technology. From 99 to 2009, we saw LiDAR, which helped us refine our map. So again, we can kind of see more technology as we move along. So it is a priority for us, but not one today.
Mr. Shaw, another question?
I guess to go back to the newfound wetlands, or somebody owns that property?
Yeah, somebody owns that. And so the interesting part of this, which is sort of a side thing, is that when someone comes in for development, we can't change the goalpost. So we can't change what the requirements are for them. They already submitted a historic review board application, they're being reviewed by historic review board for some development there. So if we were to find, if we were to, even back in January, if we were to have started the process to add the buffer around this property, we would have still missed each other, right? They could still do what they're going to do, because they're the ones that found it, and they moved forward with development before we could ever protect it. And, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, because we could still protect it for future. Because then if they do any disturbance within that vegetated corridor, they'll have to do those mitigation plantings in the future. And we can also kind of look at those adjacent properties to see if, before those developments, should we do some protection? So we're sort of splitting these two asks out. One is looking at this known problem that we have, and two is doing a whole new inventory for the city.
So, is the project, are the cottage houses that we're...
It is.
Okay, that we're gonna go in, can they still be done? And can we still provide the buffer necessary for this wetlands? Is there enough property to do everything, though, is that what you're saying?
We can't force him into a 50-foot vegetated corridor, because he's already applied.
You said we can?
Cannot.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, thank you for that clarifying question. If we do look at it in any adjacent neighbors, if we get that in place before the next one, then we could. But if we do it after the development occurs, then when they go to the, in the future, to build a shed or expand a building, we would look at it then.
Are you done?
No, I, just Commissioner, hold on.
This may be a question that you and I should take up at a later date, but as annexation occurs and the development process occurs, does that fall within his purview, or are we gonna have to expand this into like new developments? And the controlling features in that code apply to them? It's just a question of timing, you're not in the city yet, you're developing, you're clearcutting your land, you're stripping it down. Is there any constraints on that, or not until such time as they're formally brought into the city?
Good question. So a couple of different pieces to that. One is when our natural resource overlay district buffer, when we adopted the map, the map goes to the urban growth boundary. So when they come into the city, they'll be subject to our regulations. When they're in the county, they're subject to county regulations. And so we are covered as far as those concept plan areas, and as far as when the properties come into the city. What we would need to do more work on is the point when we work on urban reserves, which sounds so far away at the moment, we would have to make sure that those get inventoried, so that those features get protected.
The transition point is when you're formally in the city, when is...
Uh-huh.
Right, and the county tried but failed to get a tree ordinance passed about five or six years ago. So technically, somebody who was wanting, who was thinking about coming into the city if they had an acre that had, you know, 25 fir trees on it, they could clearcut that prior to annexation.
Yeah, and there is a fair number of timber deferral on our fringes for properties in the county.
I'll pursue it later, just for my personal education, so thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions on this?
Maybe just a comment. There is a balance between protecting a stream quarter with, you know, in some cases, an arbitrary buffer of 200 feet versus the actual impact and the actual benefit of the buffer itself. And, you know, it could encompass and, and does, several tax lots, which really restrict what the property owner can do with their property. I mean, maybe they don't only want to plant native species, they'd rather have some other kind of gardens. So, you know, there's a balance there that you have to be very careful of.
It's true, if we were to apply the purple around a property and it encovers the whole property, they have a maximum disturbance area. So that includes building and parking lot, parking, I mean driveway, and garden. Anything that's not native plants, it includes. And it's much different today than it used to be, which is why we see so many homes with the stream in their backyard, that we would never approve these days. And so a lot of these regulations deal with the balance between acknowledging that we never had such aggressive environmental protection as we do today, and we have property owners who bought their house 30 years ago and now are subject to environmental regulations and don't understand why it's so complicated to build a deck.
Anybody else? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we want to talk about...
No, they'll bring it back.
The natural resource map thing that you want to...
No, this is a work session, so they'll bring it back, you know, some form as far as the ask number one, or is that just done?
Anything we do is going to involve a large public process. If we do just a couple of properties there, then you will see it, because we'll be amending the map, which is a document associated with our code, so it's essentially a code amendment to amend the map. So it's really hard to amend the map, that's the other part of it.
Okay, so we're down to the city manager, report, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to give you a quick update on the Ermentingher House. Since our last discussion, wanted to confirm that the drywall and paint project has been completed. We have installed IT and phone lines. Right now, we're working on doing a final cleaning of the facility, getting ready for moving furniture and other items into the home. We're also working on a signage plan currently. We've had conversations with the Friends of the Ermentingher House group, and have another meeting scheduled next week. Towards the end of the month, we'll be doing a move-in of some donated furniture items. And then at the very beginning of next month, going through and sorting the current warehoused items, which were a combination of city and private citizens, items that were all palleted up when we originally had to close the home because of structural concerns. So we're currently working on the agreement with the Friends Group, and hope to come back with a formal presentation to City Commission at some point, hopefully in early June. And then we are, again, still shooting for opening the home on the 23rd and 24th for the Oregon City Heritage Days, which, as you are aware, is the Roosevelt's full sanctioned event.
Question, is the home being reopened as a museum, or what would the ultimate use be?
Correct, yeah, so we are, we're looking to open it as a house museum to utilize the property.
Questions?
Yeah, good, alright, moving forward, good.
Thank you.
Then, for your turn.